Hello everyone, thank you for joining us tonight for the informational session and public hearing on the proposed air permit for the Lansing Board of Water and Light. Before we begin the actual informational session and public hearing, I wanted to cover a few quick housekeeping items. First off, my name is Caitlin DeBries and I'm from our Environmental Support Division of Eagle, and I'll be hanging out primarily here in the background handling a lot of the tech stuff before I pass it over to the moderator, but I wanted to cover these housekeeping items. First off, all lines are muted during this meeting, and we are recording this meeting for those of you who want to go back and re-listen to anything. We will be allowing you to ask questions and field those throughout the evening. So to ask a question, you can use your Q and A box that's at the bottom of your screen in your Zoom toolbar. You can go ahead and write any questions you have in there, and we will answer those during the Q and A portion of the evening. You can also click on the hand icon at the bottom of your screen in your Zoom toolbar, and that will raise your hand, and we will be able to unmute you so that you can go ahead and ask your question verbally. The third way that you can ask a question this evening is if you're listening by phone, and it looks like we do have a couple of people listening in on the phone. So to ask your question over the phone, you can hit pound two on your phone, and that will raise your hand on our end, and we will be able to unmute you as well, so you can go ahead and ask your question that way. So now we're going to get into the informational session of the evening, and I'm going to pass things over to our moderator for the evening, Jennifer Dixon, who is going to tell you how the rest of the evening is going to run. So Jennifer, whenever you're ready, go ahead and take it away.
Thanks Caitlin. Appreciate you running through the housekeeping stuff for us tonight. Like Caitlin said, she'll be there in the background doing some of the work with the technical aspects of the meeting, but there's a couple of things that we want to go over before we get into really talking about what we're here to talk about tonight, and it's kind of just setting the stage for how the evening is going to work. So really how this is set up is there's two portions of the evening. The first portion is the informational session, so I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but during the informational session, we'll have a short presentation about the proposed project, and then we'll go to a question and answer. So the question and answer is going to be right after that, where we have a panel of staff, which I'll introduce to you in a minute, to try to answer some of those questions. The second portion of the night is the hearing portion, and I'd just like to always reiterate, and I'll probably tell you guys again this later, is the hearing portion of the night, we will listen to the comments that folks have that they want to put on the record, but we can't respond back. It's not a kind of a give and take portion, so we like to do that give and take portion in the beginning, so we can try to answer some of your questions then, and then we'll get into that hearing portion. Just one other thing to note, and again, I'll talk about this later, just remind folks, is you don't have to give a comment tonight if you want to. There is going to be time after this meeting until May 14th to provide comments, and we'll talk about the other ways that you can provide those comments later as well. So without further ado, let's get into a couple of the other things that we have set for tonight. We always like to start our public meetings with what we call group norms, and it's just ways for us to communicate back and forth with each other. We always want to encourage people to listen actively with an ear to understanding. We've tried our best to put together some information, and we hope will help you in providing a comment tonight. We really want you to ask questions and ask for that clarification. If there's something that we've brought forward that is not being understood, or you still want some more information about, we're happy to try to do that as well. We want to make sure that we're criticizing ideas and not necessarily individuals, and that goes for folks here from Eagle, and you know, also all of you. We want to communicate respectfully with each other, and then the last thing that we want to do is take space and leave space, and that is basically, you know, making sure that nobody keeps the floor for too long during the question and answer portion of the evening. And just to note that these group norms were developed with our Flint Environmental Justice Coalition that we work with, and so we're really happy that they helped us put these all together. So this is just a brief agenda of what we're going to be doing tonight, excuse me. Before we get into the agenda itself, I do want to introduce my air quality staff, and I realize I didn't say who I was. Caitlin did. I'm Jennifer Dixon, and I work here in the Air Quality Division. I will be moderating tonight, and I'll also be the hearing officer. But the first person that I'm going to introduce to you is Chris Etheridge. Chris, if you don't mind turning your camera on, Chris is our Assistant Division Director here in the Air Quality Division, and he's also the decision maker for this permit action. So he's going to be listening really closely tonight to all the things that we talk about, and specifically to the public hearing portion. So Chris, I think you wanted to welcome folks to the meeting, so if you would like to do that, go right ahead.
Sure, thanks Jen. Yeah, just wanted to thank everyone for your time tonight. It is a beautiful spring evening in Michigan, so I know there's lots of other things people would rather be doing, but we really value your time. Our staff has put a lot of effort into the presentation tonight to maximize your time, but also wanted to say thank you for your participation, not only in tonight's meeting, but reviewing the permits and providing comment to us. We will be carefully considering all comments and concerns that we receive on this permit, and we'll be responding to all of those appropriately. So thank you again for your time tonight. I'll turn it back to Jen.
Yeah, thank you for that. So like I said, we have a panel of folks on tonight, and I just want to introduce them really briefly. You're going to be hearing from some of them more than others, so if my panelists can turn their cameras on, I'll just kind of run through who everybody is. So one of the main people that you're going to be hearing from tonight is Tom Herkula. He is the Permit Engineer for the project, so he's going to be doing the majority of the presentation, talk about our division, what we do, how permits are processed, a little bit more about the public comment process in general, and then talking specifically about this application that we received. Another person that you're going to be definitely hearing from tonight is Michelle Luplow. Michelle is one of our inspectors here in the Lansing District Office. She's also the inspector for this area, so if this permit is issued and the facility is built, she would be the inspector for that as well. I also have Erica Wolf on. She is from our air monitoring staff. She does a lot of work with our stationary air monitors, so there is one in Lansing here, and then we have other ones all around the state, so she can definitely answer questions about that. Other folks that I have on is I have Rick Welsh. He is our toxicologist for this permit. So toxicologists work really closely with health based screening levels, and that's part of our permitting is that we look at those health based screening levels. So our toxicologists work at reviewing those and developing those, so he'd be able to speak to that. Steph Hangspah, she is our air modeler, so I always like to try to differentiate between monitoring and modeling. Modeling is, our folks that do modeling do sort of futurecasting about pollutants. So in the case of this facility, it's not built yet, it's not releasing pollutants into the air, so our modelers use computers to say what would happen if this facility was built, how would those pollutants potentially impact the community, and ensure that those impacts are going to be below the health based screening levels. So Steph's a really important part of our team as well. And then we do have, of course, you met Caitlin, and then we also have Jim Ostrowski on the line, and he's going to be working with us in the background too. So you've met everybody, like I said, we'll introduce more people in a minute. So Tom, if you want to keep your camera on, but everybody else, if you guys want to turn yours off right now, that's great. So the agenda tonight, we're going to do that information session. Like I said, Tom's going to walk you through the proposed permit. We're going to talk to Michelle about potential compliance aspects of this, how would the inspection process work, and what is her role in something like this. We'll get to that question and answer, so remember, that's when we'll be able to answer some of your questions, you know, have a little bit of back and forth there. Then we'll roll into that public hearing, and just as a reminder, that's when we'll be taking comments on the record, and we won't really be responding. Sometimes people in their comments will ask a question, that's perfectly fine, but we won't be responding at that time. Once we get done with the hearing, we'll talk to you a little bit more about how you can submit an official comment after the hearing is over. There's a lot of different ways that you can do that, so we want to make sure that folks know what those are. We'll talk a little bit about where you can find information, and then how you can get ahold of us if you have questions. So one thing I want to just talk about before I pass the mic over to Tom, is to just kind of acknowledge everybody who is here tonight. Again, like Chris said, we had a lot of people that registered ahead of time. Our registration process offers the ability to be able to enter questions in, which was always great. Folks had a lot of really good questions that were in there, and I just want to make sure I acknowledge that we probably won't be able to answer all of those. Our air quality staff don't have the expertise in some of those areas, so we are sharing this information with our Office of Climate and Energy. They do a lot of that work that's kind of outside the scope of this permit. So things like, how does this align with the My Healthy Climate Plan? If the company was required to look at other types of plants that they could build, you know, if there was solar, wind energy that were considered, things like that are going to be a little bit outside of the scope of this particular information session and hearing. We're happy to try to answer some of those questions. I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that we might not be able to get to things like that this evening. So yeah, without further ado, thank you for listening to me for a minute here. I'm going to pass it over to Tom. If you want to share your screen over mine, Tom, and you can take it away whenever you're ready. I'll let you know when I'm seeing your presentation. Yep, that looks good to me.
Perfect. All right, thank you Jen. Like Jen said, my name is Tom Herkula, and I am the Lead Permit Engineer for the Lansing Board of Water and Light Permit Application. I worked with a team of air quality staff, including some of the folks at our panel, to review this application. But before we get into the details of the project, I'd like to talk about what the Air Quality Division does and how the permitting process works. Sorry about that. Air pollution comes from many different plant sources, including power plants, fuel burning vehicles, and various industrial sources. And the overall mission of the AQD is to protect public health and the environment, and we provide this protection by using our authority under both state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. So the AQD staff do a lot of different things. Our monitoring group, such as Erica, monitor levels of air pollutants. Our toxicologists, such as Rick, examine toxic air contaminants to make sure that public health is protected. Our district inspectors, such as Michelle, conduct inspections of industrial sources of air pollutants, such as Lansing Board of Water and Light. And our permit engineers, like myself, we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants, to make sure that the proposed projects comply with state and federal rules that protect public health. So our rules require us to issue permits to sources of air pollutants. However, I'd like to point out a few things that the proposed permit does not cover, and that we aren't able to regulate. These include things like zoning, noise, and traffic on public roads. If you have questions or concerns about these issues, you will want to talk to your local government. Additionally, the AQD cannot consider whether or not residents want the project to be done, and we do not determine if the proposed project is needed when reviewing an air permit application. We evaluate a project to ensure that it meets the applicable air quality rules. To make sure a company is meeting all rules and regulations, they need to follow the process of obtaining a permit to install for the equipment, and I'd like to briefly give you a simple overview of the air permitting process. First, the company decides they want to either install, or modify, or construct a source of air emissions. The company then submits a permit application. The application is then reviewed by an engineer, like myself, to decide if their request can meet both the state and federal air quality rules. During the review, other air quality staff, like the members on our panel, are involved to help with different parts of the review. This includes the review of toxic air contaminants, also called TACs, and how the emissions may impact the surrounding community. If these rules are met, the engineer creates what is called a proposed permit. If public comment is required, as in this case, the proposed permit is posted for the public to comment. And public comment is a very important part of the permitting process, which is why we are here talking with you tonight. Once the comment period ends, we evaluate all of the comments submitted. The comments can lead to changes in both the permit and the final decision. Finally, a decision is made on the permit application. This decision could be to approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes, or to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether what the company wants to do can meet the air quality regulations. So before we talk about what Lansing Board of Water and Light is requesting in their application, I briefly want to give you some background on Lansing Board of Water and Light, and what they currently do. As most of you are aware, Lansing Board of Water and Light is a city-owned public utility that provides electric and water services. The company currently owns both the Erickson Station and the Delta Energy Park in Delta Township, Michigan. The Erickson Station, which was a coal-fired power plant, was decommissioned in November of 2022, which means it has been shut down and is no longer in operation. The Delta Energy Park began operation in 2022, and it consists of three natural gas-fired steam turbines used for power generation. The site of the Erickson Station and the Delta Energy Park is considered an existing major source of some air pollutants. And what a major source is, is a facility that has the potential to emit some pollutants above certain thresholds. Major sources have more stringent monitoring and record-keeping requirements in their permits, and they're also inspected more frequently and have greater oversight by Eagle than smaller sources of air pollutants. In addition, this site is currently subject to federal rules for turbines in addition to our state laws. So this image shows the site of the current Lansing Board of Water and Light facility. This is the location of the proposed engine plant for which Lansing Board of Water Light has submitted an application. This is the site of the Erickson Power Plant, which, as I mentioned, has been decommissioned and is no longer in operation. And this is the site of the existing Delta Energy Park. And it should be noted that because the Delta Energy Park is an existing facility, it currently operates under its own separate permit. Lansing Board of Water and Light is asking to install six new natural gas-fired internal combustion engines, and I will just refer to those as engines from now on, as well as supporting equipment near the Delta Energy Park. The engines would be used to provide supplemental power to the electric grid. Each engine will be equipped with control devices used to control potential emissions. An oxidation catalyst will be used to reduce both carbon monoxide and volatile organic compound emissions, and a catalyst is simply a material that helps speed up a chemical reaction. Selective catalytic reduction, or SCR, will be used to reduce nitrogen oxide emissions, and I'll talk a little bit more about SCR on the next slide. The installation of this new equipment requires a permit to install per Michigan's air quality rules. As I mentioned on the previous slide, Lansing Board of Water and Light is planning to use selective catalytic reduction, or SCR, to control nitrogen oxide emissions. SCR reduces nitrogen oxide emissions by causing a reaction with the exhaust gas. Ammonia, or urea, which forms ammonia at high heat, is used to react with the nitrogen oxides. The nitrogen oxides are broken down, and nitrogen and water are created as a result. To accelerate this reaction, the exhaust gas and ammonia are run through a metal catalyst, and this catalyst is usually platinum, or rhodium, or some other type of metal, and this catalyst speeds up the reaction in the exhaust gas. So let's talk about the permit application review. When reviewing a proposed permit, or proposed project, I should say, the permit engineer works with other air quality staff to review the application. This review includes several things, such as state and federal rules that may apply to the project, evaluating the proposed pollutant releases against the rules that may apply, and this includes checking and verifying the project's emission calculations. There's also an air toxics review to make sure that toxic air contaminants can meet health-based screening levels, and we perform air modeling for criteria pollutants and toxic air contaminants where applicable. Essentially, we need to know if the installation of these engines at Lansing Board of Water and Light can meet these requirements. And over the next few slides, I'm going to talk to you in more detail about these different parts of the review. All potential air pollutants created by burning natural gas at Lansing Board of Water and Light were reviewed. This includes criteria pollutants, which is a small group of well-studied and regulated pollutants. For this project, we looked at several pollutants, including nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, particulate matter less than or equal to 10 microns, and particulate matter less than or equal to two and a half microns. The US EPA sets national ambient air quality standards, referred to as NACS, for these pollutants to protect both public health and the environment. Hazardous air pollutants are another set of pollutants that are known or suspected to cause health effects or environmental effects. The US EPA regulates these through federal regulations, including one for engines, and Lansing Board of Water and Light would be required to comply with this rule. We also reviewed some toxic air contaminants, which are a larger group of pollutants covered by Michigan rules. They include almost any pollutant that is not a criteria pollutant, including hazardous air pollutants. Our rules allow our toxicologists to set health-based screening levels for toxic air contaminants. I want to talk in a little more detail about toxic air contaminants and their health-based screening levels. The screening levels are designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. When we're performing our review, we look at all toxic air contaminants that could be released to the air, and compare these against the health-based screening levels, often using computer dispersion modeling. Our review of the toxic air contaminants from fuel combustion in the engines determine the emissions would not violate our health-based screening levels. So as I mentioned a few slides ago, and I mentioned on the last slide as well, review of this project included what is known as dispersion modeling, and I want to briefly talk about what modeling is and why it's so important to the review process. Computer modeling predicts what concentrations neighbors could be exposed to under the worst-case scenarios, and when we say worst-case scenarios, we mean the engines operating at their maximum potential emission rate. The modeling simulates a grid of virtual air monitors surrounding the facility, and this allows the highest concentrations to be considered. So modeling was performed for toxic air contaminants from the engines, emissions of carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, particulate matter less than or equal to 10 microns, and particulate matter less than or equal to two and a half microns were also modeled based on their potential to emit. The modeling showed all of the TACs were able to meet their health-based screening levels, and the impact from criteria pollutants is less than the National Ambient Air Quality Standard threshold, so the emissions are expected to comply with thresholds. So I want to briefly go over what entails a permit, and a permit is a legally enforceable document with a list of requirements the company must comply with. The requirements in the permit ensure the equipment operates as described in the application, and ensures that it operates in the same way that was reviewed by the AQD. A permit to install can include any or all of the following things. It can include emission limits that restrict the amount of emissions from the proposed equipment. It can include material limits that may restrict the amount or type of fuel used or product produced. It can include requirements to have control devices installed, maintained, and operated properly. There could be testing requirements that lay out what pollutants must be tested, and how the testing must be done to show they comply with limits in the permit. There could be monitoring and record-keeping requirements, as well as reporting requirements, and there could be requirements to comply with federal regulations where applicable. As I mentioned earlier, the existing Delta Energy Park has a current permit that contains many of the restrictions and requirements mentioned above. So the proposed permit conditions for the installation of the engines include emission limits on the engines for carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, volatile organic compounds, formaldehyde, and particulate matter, limits on the type of fuel Lansing Board of Water and Light can use in the engines, a requirement to operate both the oxidation catalyst and SCR when the engines are in operation, testing requirements that lay out the pollutants that must be tested, and how the testing must be done to show that they can comply with the proposed emission limits, extensive monitoring and record-keeping, and as an example, they are required to continuously monitor the parameters for both the oxidation catalyst and SCR, to make sure that those are operating properly, and also a requirement to comply with the US EPA's federal regulations for engines. And now that we've covered the proposed permit conditions, I'm going to turn it over to the District Inspector, Michelle Luplow, so she can tell you about her role in the process.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Good afternoon, everyone. As Tom mentioned, my name is Michelle Luplow, and I am an inspector out of the Lansing District Office, and I am the inspector specifically assigned to this facility. Tom just described all the steps that are involved in the review and evaluation of a permit application, and he discussed the involvement of different units within the Air Quality Division in drafting a permit. And so what I want to do now is take you through what happens after a permit is issued to a facility. So similar to how I inspect the Delta Energy Park facility, if a permit were issued for this site, as the inspector of the facility, it is my responsibility to determine the facility's compliance with that permit, and there are a number of ways that we can do that. One is, a big one, is routine inspections, which we typically conduct unannounced. That means that we do not let the facility know that we're coming in advance. They know that we're there when we're there at their door, and because the Lansing Board of Water and Light Facility, the Delta Energy Park Facility, is a major source of air pollutants, I'm required to inspect that facility at least once every other year. But many times, we visit a facility more often than once every other year for other reasons that are required in the permit. For example, we attend all stack tests required by the permit to ensure that the equipment is operating as it should, so we can get representative stack test data and emissions data. When we conduct an inspection, we are onsite at the facility, we take a tour of the entire site, we look at all permitted equipment, as well as state and federal regulations. We physically look at the equipment to make sure that it's operating properly, that the control devices are operating properly. We will get the stacks, and we conduct thorough reviews of the records that are also required by the permit. We might also conduct additional inspections if we get a complaint. So a complete investigation is similar to a compliance inspection, but typically focusing on an area of the facility, which we believe may be associated with the complaint, rather than a facility-wide compliance inspection. But I want to note here that if you're interested in seeing those inspection reports, they are available to the public. They are public records, and they're posted on Eagle's website to be accessed at any time. Additionally, besides the compliance inspections and site visits, we also evaluate the facility's emissions on an annual basis. They are required to submit those annually, so the emissions are evaluated annually. We also review annual and semi-annual reports concerning the facility's operations and compliance status. With that, I believe I've covered everything I needed to, so I am going to pass it back to Jen for a question and answer period.
Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and just share my screen again here. All right. So I know folks have already been putting questions in the question box. Really appreciate that. That's great. Wanted to go over just a couple of things before we get into that Q and A, just so that you can be thinking about it while you're maybe formulating your question, or potentially your comment to give during the public hearing portion of the night. So the first thing I want to mention, I realized I didn't mention this earlier, it's just that we will try to start the hearing right around seven o'clock, or when you guys are done asking questions, whatever comes first. So we don't have like exactly at seven, we're going to stop answering questions and get into the hearing, but we're going to try to just be respectful of people's time and get there around seven. So just wanted to let you know that. And then the second thing is, is I want to just kind of talk about comments. We get a lot of questions about what comments can you consider when you're making a decision on this? What comments can't you consider? I think you heard Tom talk a little bit in the beginning about things that we can't consider, like noise and traffic and zoning, things like that. And so folks typically ask that, but what I want to really say is that you can really comment on anything. If you want to come out on noise, traffic, and zoning, because that's very important for you, we're happy to take those comments. We just might not be able to address them by making changes in the proposed permit to address those. So want to just like talk a little bit about what kind of comments typically might lead to changes. So those are going to be things that are focused very much on the content and the basis of the proposed permit. The comments that are requesting specific changes might be made, so maybe you see that there's not testing for a certain pollutant, and you think there should be, that could be something that you might want to comment on. Comments that might not lead to changes, like I talked about earlier, things like zoning, you know, things that are outside of our ability to regulate, or things that are outside the scope of the proposed permit and what the company is asking for in our review. So just kind of wanted to lay that out a little bit as you think about what comments you might want to make, potentially what kinds of questions you might want to ask. So I know there's lots of good questions, so I want to get right to those. So if my panelists can turn their cameras on again, and we will get right into this here. So I noticed that there are some questions that are similar enough that I might lump them together. I just want people to know that if you don't hear your question read word for word, you know, sometimes I don't want to ask the panelists to answer the question twice, just for, you know, sake of time, but I want to make sure that we're getting to as many of the questions as we possibly can. So one of the first questions that came in was about, it's a little bit out of the scope of this, but I think it's important to talk about. So I'm going to read this one, but if you asked a question that's similar, because I think I saw this come in a couple of times, hopefully Hopefully this will help. So the question was, how did the decision, how was the decision made to consider health impacts on vulnerable populations in only a one-mile radius rather than a more stringent three-mile radius or more? I think there was another question about this as well. And I'll just kind of read that one, just so we can kind of think about, think about that a little bit more too. Just want to make sure that I'm getting the right one here. Sorry, I think I might have, okay, the first concern is of the radius of the concern for environmental justice issues that Eagle uses. Why only one mile instead of the federal standard of three miles? So I'm going to talk a little bit about that and just from an environmental justice perspective and how Eagles process is set up right now. We don't have an environmental justice policy here in the state. We also don't have the ability to factor in environmental justice concerns into our decision. That doesn't mean that we don't look at environmental justice aspects, that we don't assess things. It's really important part of our process to assess the community that proposed plant is going to go in and do the best thing we can with our outreach, our communication, how we're talking about the project and really letting people know. I'm doing sort of enhanced public outreach and things like that. The one-mile radius, I think, and I might be misspeaking here, but that might have come from our proposed project summary, which is kind of our higher level outreach that we do on these permitting projects. And when we talk about that one-mile radius, that is specific to our limited English proficiency plan. So that plan requires us to look within a one-mile radius of a proposed facility and assess what the language needs are of that one-mile radius. So that is where that kind of comes into play. We did, when we saw, one of the questions had come in when people registered about this. And so we did look at that three-mile radius just to kind of see, you know, what, where does this come into play? And did talk about it within this group here of panelists when we were getting ready for this meeting. So it's definitely something that we're willing to look at. So it's a really great question. But like I said, unfortunately, as it stands right now, Eagle doesn't have an environmental justice policy and we're not allowed to consider that when making our decision. But we do consider those factors as we look to prepare for meetings like this and put things out for comment. So that was a really good question. Thanks for bringing that up. This question is going to go to, I think I'm going to send this one to Steph. So there's a question, there's a couple of questions where they're talking about modeling. And so I'm going to read a couple of them for you. So the, the question concerns worst-case scenarios for modeling. Did the scenarios consider less-than-ideal performance of the control technologies being deployed? So that's the first question. I'm going to read both of them, so you can be thinking about how you might want to talk about this. And then it says, how, how has Eagle considered both the impact of the expected emissions of the new plants combined with the emissions of the existing plant and modeling the long-term effects of emissions on the populations downwind? Almost all of the greater Lansing area of the combined plant. So that Eagle is not only looking at each plant individually. So let me know if you want me to read those again for you, but I thought those might be two things you can kind of talk about together, if you don't mind.
Right, no problem. As far as the control equipment, I might pass that on to Tom after this, just because, to be honest, I'm not overly familiar with the exact control equipment that was at this facility. I do know when we perform dispersion modeling, the whole object of the modeling is to build the facility in a computer program. You can't monitor something that's not existent, like Jennifer had talked about earlier. So we have what we call pseudo receptors. There are thousands of them surrounding the facility. When we do modeling for the different criteria pollutants, we do look at the facility, the project emissions from the facility. So we look at that. We also looked at all the existing emissions of the particular pollutants at that facility as well. And on top of that, we add on additional sources in the area. So we did do, you know, a query of other facilities near the, near this Lansing Board of Water and Light Facility for this project. Some of the nearby sources I know that were included was the Rio Towne Facility. Lansing Board of Water and Light has, when we evaluated PM 2.5 emissions from that facility was also included in the dispersion model. Centus, which is just north of the facility, emissions from that were also included. I know for nitrogen dioxide, again, the Rio Township Lansing Board of Water and Light Facility was modeled along with the Jam Lansing Delta Township Plant. So that is something we do. We do look at the whole surrounding area. And for modeling, we actually went out and determined impacts that were about nine miles surrounding the facility. And I don't know if it'd be beneficial or not, but I'm going to just quickly share my screen and just to get a little bit. It's kind of, give me a second. Just to kind of give you a little visual of, of the surrounding area. Oh, I got to click share. Sorry about that. Let me know when it's up. If Jennifer, is it up?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, thank you. This is just, what I did is exported our receptor grid, what we talk about. All these little yellow, you can kind of see them here, almost small dots. They are more concentrated here in the center. This is the, the facility itself. We generally, the maximum impacts are close into a facility, so we have a very dense receptor grid. At each one of these points, we want the maximum impact. We look at five years of modeling. So we don't just look at one year, we do a five-year evaluation. So we simulate the emissions coming out of the facility, we apply meteorology to that, and then ask the computer program to give us the maximum impact at each one of these, these thousands of points out there. And again, this kind of shows you a little bit of a visual, this blue box here, that is, that was actually our, our model grid, what we call, so basically we like to impacts within that. Like I said, it was roughly nine point two-five miles in every direction from the facility was where we actually evaluated. So it wasn't just right near the facility. We did account, you know, surrounding areas quite a distance as well.
I'm going to go ahead and just share my screen again. Hold on one second. Sorry, folks. Wasn't, I didn't know you were going to stop sharing stuff, so I wasn't prepared. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Not a problem, not a problem. So Tom, I didn't know, I know Steph mentioned you might have something else to add. And there is some other questions about the control equipment. So once you respond to this, I have another one that I'm going to ask you about that.
Sure. So in terms of whether or not we looked at whether the control equipment would be operating or if it wasn't operating, the facility is not allowed by the permit conditions. They are not allowed to operate these engines if the control devices are not working. If their control devices are malfunctioning or if there are any other concerns with that, they are not allowed to run the engines. And we've included a malfunction abatement plan to basically make the company have to address any concerns with their control equipment. A scenario we did review is that during startup or shutdown of the engines, the engines may have some slight increases in pollutants, a little bit higher than what they would be at steady state. So when we performed our dispersion modeling, we assumed that the engines would be running at that startup or shutdown condition to ensure that we were looking at the true worst-case emission rate of those engines. We did not just look at the steady state, we looked at the true worst-case scenario for the engines.
That's actually perfect. The question that I was just going to ask you is exactly related to that. So, and I'm just going to read the question, so folks know what was exactly asked and, because it's interesting. So it's known that rice engines can start up in less than five minutes, but it takes the SCR much longer to become fully functioning and thus not optimally controlling emissions. So how does that impact consideration for permitting? So like Tom just talked about, we did look at those startup and shutdown times, because that's really important to looking at the worst case and making sure that even at those worst-case emissions, we're going to be still meeting the rules and regulations that apply to it. So yeah, that's a great question. All right, looking at this, I'm going to shift over to Erica. So Erica, this question is about monitors. And the question is, is simply, will additional exterior air quality monitors be installed in closer proximity of the Delta Energy Center? So if you don't mind, in case people that are listening and don't know where the stationary monitor is in Lansing, if you can talk about that a little bit, and then, you know, maybe talk a little bit about what those stationary monitors are used for and how other sensors that people might have are also used. If you don't mind, just kind of giving folks some perspective on that.
Sure. Yeah, the monitor that is in Lansing right now is on Philly Street, right off of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It's close to the airport, that side of town. And that monitor has been there for a couple of years now. We, it used to be at a school and then we lost site access to that and had to move it to its current place. And you wanted to know the difference between, like, the purpose of air monitoring, sorry, Jen, I-
Yeah, because the, the question was, you know, are we going to have another air monitor put near to this facility? Or what might happen in the future? And I know the network plan's coming out soon. That's something that Erica's group works on. So I don't know if you can just give a little bit of perspective on the decision-making.
Yeah, actually, we do have another PM 2.5, particulate matter 2.5 microns or less, monitor going in the Lansing area. It's scheduled to be put in around 2027. But that does not have any impact based on this permit. It was strictly because the population of Lansing exceeded a threshold and we needed to put another monitor. And we're looking to put that in around South Lansing area. We like to put them like near schools or parks. So we're still scouting out locations right now. Our, as Jen said, our network plan, which shows where we're going to be monitoring for the next year, is currently in draft form. We're putting that out for public comment in like a week or so. So if you want to get on the GovDelivery list for that, you can get notified of that. But yeah, we do not put in air monitors strictly based on permitting decisions, because the purpose of an air monitor is not for compliance for permitting. It's to get a general sense of what the ambient outside air quality is for people to make sure that everybody is, that the ambient air is complying with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. That's the first and foremost purpose of the air monitors. Compliance purposes, I don't know if Tom or Michelle would like to speak to that.
No, I think you handled it really well. The monitors are different. I think getting, knowing what the network plan is, if folks are interested, I don't know if Caitlin or Jim, if you have a minute to share how you can sign up for GovDelivery notes. GovDelivery is just our email subscription system that we send out things, information that we think people might be interested in. So things like the notice for this public hearing that we held, once it was requested, we sent a note out that way. We send information about other things that are open for comment. So maybe we can share that in the chat as well. So there is a question here, Tom, for you. And I think you can answer it, and I think you talked about that it might be a permit condition in the proposed permit. And it's how many hours per year are the rice engines expected to run and what is the basis of the estimate? So I don't know if you can speak to that.
Yeah, so, so this kind of goes back to what I had mentioned earlier about the true worst-case scenario. When we look at the worst-case emissions for these engines, we are assuming that each engine is going to run 24/7, 365 days a year. The facility does not anticipate to run them as much as 80, as what we call 8,760 hours per year, where it's essentially 24/7. The facility doesn't anticipate to run them that much, but when we reviewed their emission calculations, when we review their modeling and their toxic air contaminants, we assumed, and their calculations assumed, that the engines would be running for 24/7, 365 days a year. And again, that goes back to the true worst-case scenario of these engines. They are permitted to run up to 8,760 hours per year, but the facility does not anticipate that they will run that way. However, we have to review it as if they will.
Okay, thanks for that. I'm going to keep you on, so don't, don't mute yourself yet. There's another question related to pollutant emissions from the proposed permit. And the question is, the engines at the Erickson Facility are expected to generate about 55, 550,000, sorry, can't read today, tons per year of CO2E, which is greenhouse gases and kind of translating, generalizing that. What is Eagles' thresholds for acceptable emissions? So I don't know specifically if there's a limit in the permit for that, or if there's some part of the review that you do. But if there is, could you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so in addition to the, the limit that we have in the permit, I believe the limit is per engine. We do for major sources, we do what is called a best available control technology analysis, or what we call a backed analysis. And any pollutant that has the potential to emit over a certain threshold must go through this backed analysis. And the backed analysis is provided by the company, and it includes a technical feasibility report. It has to include economic feasibility to determine if there are any additional control technologies that they could implement that will help control emissions. And Lansing Board of Water and Light did provide a backed analysis for CO2 emissions. Or I, I guess as a brief aside, we call them CO2 equivalent, because there are, there's more than one greenhouse gas. So we call it CO2 equivalent emissions. But they did provide a CO2 equivalent backed analysis, and we did review it. And based on our review of their analysis, we believe that they have met back for CO2 emissions. So, so to answer your question generally, there really isn't a, we don't have a set number where we would not allow a permit or we will put in a limit or something.
The rule doesn't say, you have to stay below the specific amount. It's based on the evaluation that the permit engineers do when the application comes in. So our rules are written, they're like, for all the pollutants, the rule doesn't say thou shalt only admit this much of this. That's all done on a case-by-case assessment involving all the things that the folks here do to write those permit conditions to make sure that they'll meet the standards. We've got other questions about specific pollutants too, Tom, so if you don't mind kind of staying on for this. One of these questions is definitely interesting, and it says, although the turbines at the Delta Plant operate under a separate permit, why aren't the total emissions from the plant added to the allowable emissions? Specifically, they mentioned hazardous air pollutants, but I don't know if you can talk about how that works, and Michelle might be able to add something in as well, but I thought I'd hand it over to you first.
Yeah, so essentially, the engines are considered a separate project from the turbines. The turbines were installed separately from the engines. So when we review a proposed project, we look at, initially, we look at the project emissions. Now, if modeling is required, as Steph mentioned earlier, we will look at other facilities and background concentrations. In terms of the turbines or the site itself, I don't know, Michelle, if you want to talk a little bit more about how we permit major sources and how this would be a little bit different from a, a smaller source, so to speak.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about renewable operating permits, Tom?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so when, when a facility hits certain thresholds, or their potential to emit is over certain thresholds, they have, they become subject to Title V Renewable Operating Permit Program. So currently, the Lansing Board of Water and Light, Delta Energy Park, is, does have a renewable operating permit. They are considered a major source. Not recalling right now if it's, I think it's just for criteria air pollutants, yeah, criteria air pollutants. With the addition of, you know, if this, this permit went through, the permit for this facility would be incorporated into the renewable operating permit. And the facility would also become a major source of HAPS, and additional federal requirements would be added on top of what's already in the renewable operating permit. So it, it will be regulated under the permit if it's issued, but it also will be incorporated into the larger permit for that stationary source. It's considered a stationary source because the, the properties are contiguous, adjacent. They operate under the same type of industrial code. So it would all be considered one source.
Yeah, thanks for that, Michelle. Renewable operating permits can, it's a different permitting program than this one. I think we mentioned that, so it's definitely something that we can talk about more if, if folks are interested, but I appreciate the kind of high-level overview of that. We're going to stay on pollutants for you, Tom. So this one is specific to volatile organic compounds. So it says volatile compounds were generically mentioned. One of the concerns that has been heard in the- One of the concerns that has been heard in the community is bromide emissions. Are these compounds identify and identified in the materials? Open for inspection. But I think um, by inspection, like, let's talk about were these evaluated um, as part of this permit application. And if, I know there was quite a list of toxic air contaminants that we looked at. So if you're not sure right now, like, you know, feel free to say that. We can get back to folks later too. Um, also, we don't forget, we have Rick on. And if he has anything to speak to in regards to that, that could be helpful.
Yeah, so, so like Jen said, we review a very long list of toxic air contaminants. And although, all the techs were able to meet health-based screening levels, I am not sure off the top of my head um, what bromide compounds were uh, reviewed, if any. I can certainly provide that information. Uh, if, if, if that, if that person would be willing to leave their email, I can certainly follow up with them. But I do, I do know that we were able to meet all our health-based standards with, with all the techs that we reviewed.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that. So we can definitely get back to you. If you did, if you registered for the meeting as you came in or registered earlier, we should have your email address. So we'll be able to contact you that way. And we'll also give you Tom's contact information at the end of the evening, in case you wanna get back that way. Well, we can definitely do that for sure. Um, okay, sorry about that. I got a little bit distracted. You guys have some really, really good questions. I appreciate every, all the time that you put into them. I actually have a hand up. I just realized. I apologize, Randy. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. I didn't realize I had a hand up there. So if you want to go ahead and ask your question, I know you've been asking some questions. And maybe there's some follow-up to one of the responses that you wanted to give. So go ahead.
Yeah, no, I hit the uh, raise hand button by mistake.
Well, you know it works now, so that's
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks for doing that anyway.
Yeah, no problem. I appreciate that. So um, Randy did ask another question that we're going to, that I'd like to go back to. And it was almost a follow-up to um, your discussion, Erica. So the question was, if we put in this new monitor in Lansing, um, looking at PM two point five, which that's particulate matter less than two point five microns in diameter. So it's very, very tiny particles. Um, if those levels at that station get higher than, you know, what is in the application? What would that factor into your decision? So um, just to baseline again, those monitors aren't for specific facilities. So we don't say, hey, this number is high. It must be this specific facility. It's not typically how it works. But maybe you could talk about, would there be something for any pollutant, but specifically those tiny particles that could trigger another monitoring being put in in the Lansing area?
Normally, no. Um, when those numbers, if numbers go higher than the EPA National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and that happens over a prolonged period, like usually a three-year period, then it could trigger the area to go into non-attainment for that pollutant, which gets into a whole different level of permitting criteria that facilities have to go do. Um, but no, just for pollutants, levels rising does not necessarily trigger another monitor in the area. But we do mo, we monitor the monitors daily. And if they do start to go up and it seems unusual, then we contact the district office and let them know. And that they can look around at facilities in the area of the monitor and see what might be causing that. So it's more of an information gathering um, tool for the district, but not for compliance purposes at all.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, so Tom, I'm going to put these ones to you again. So these are specific about control technology. There's a couple of questions that came in about using specific kinds of control devices and applying control technologies to certain pollutants. So um, this question is, and I'm gonna kind of give you both of them. So, cuz I think you might have a similar answer. So it appears that Eagle will not require control technology for particulate matter for the rice engines. Can you speak about how that decision was made and whether you can consider that decision if you saw certain emissions after the engines began operating? So if we did testing and, and there was um, higher emissions, would we add something? And then the same thing kind of goes for those greenhouse gases or um, CO two E that we showed. Um, did we look at potential control devices for those emissions? And in the future, if new, new control devices came out that could control those better, would we then require them to be implemented at this facility if it's built? So a little bit similar, maybe responses to those questions on controlling different kinds of emissions and, and the review that you did, if you don't mind kind of addressing those.
Sure. So that, it kinda goes back a little bit to the, the best available control technology analysis. Um, we uh, Lansing Board of Water and Light did provide a backed analysis. And we did review it for particulate matter as well as for the CO two E or the CO two equivalent. And based on their analysis, um, and, and based on our review of it, I should say, um, we determined that based on uh, cost efficiency of controlling the particulate matter, that uh, control at this time would not be considered um, feasible for the facility. As to whether or not future control could be mandated if, if, say, they blow past an emission limit or um, if, if a better control technology comes available. That one I'm not a hundred percent sure on. I'm, I'm not sure if we have, and that, if, that may be a district decision. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we have the authority to do that. Um, but we did look at control technologies for um, all the pollutants that had, that were, that had a potential to emit above a major source threshold.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for talking about that. I know that process can be um, complicated, especially with so many different types of pollutants for proposals like this. Um, I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. I know we're running up to seven o'clock. So again, I just wanna be conscientious of time here. So there is um, some questions. Rick, I'm gonna have you address part of this one. And then um, I'm gonna talk about it a little bit too. So there's a few questions in here just about protecting the health of vulnerable populations. How do, how does this review take into account people who have pre-existing conditions like asthma, other breathing problems, heart disease, um, the young, the, you know, elderly? Um, how does this review kind of take into account those folks? Um, how do, how can we be sure that the people in this community are protected under the rules and regulations? One question, one person um, said, you know, oh, you can't abate all risk. So how do we establish what risk is okay for this community? Um, so I know that you specifically work, Rick, with our toxic air contaminant program. You're one of our toxicologists and you worked on this permit application. Um, but I wanna go back to a slide that we talked about earlier, um, that Tom talked about the different kind of categories of air pollutants that we look at. Um, I think you've, we throw out a lot of acronyms. So if there's something that I say that is unclear or isn't helpful, you know, definitely let me know. But one, one of the things that we really count on is those National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And the reason we do is that's a, you know, a subset of air pollutants that um, can have a lot of negative impacts on health and the environment. It's like Tom mentioned, it's a very well-studied group of pollutants. And EPA has established these standards. No permits get issued that exceed those standards. They're a very important part of the part, the work that we do to review applications. And that's why we have Stephanie do the modeling so that she can, like I say, I try, I say future cast because this facility hasn't been built. So we can't directly measure anything with a device or a method or anything like that. We have to really use other tools that we have to look at that. Um, so we can't issue a permit if any of those monitors that Stephanie looks at exceeds those National Ambient Air Quality Standards. That's really, really important. We also have to count on the way EPA develops the rules around hazardous air pollutants to ensure that none of those pollutants are going to be exceeding those health-based levels. It's really, really important. Um, part of the permit review too. If any of them exceed it, we can't issue the permit. Um, so I, I'm gonna have Rick talk about this a little bit. But I wanna just mention that, you know, we're very lucky in Michigan that we have rules that um, look at toxic air contaminants. So we have about almost thirteen hundred different toxic air contaminants that we look at through our permitting process. Most states don't have that. So we're very lucky to have this program. It gives us kind of another level of protections that we can look at for communities. Um, like I said, a lot of states are kind of limited to those National Ambient Air Quality Standards and those hazardous air pollutants. They don't have a specialized program like we do to use in their permit. So wanted to just lay that groundwork on the different types of um, pollutants that we're looking at. And then have Rick kind of talk about his review of those toxic air contaminants and how that takes into account vulnerable populations. And really appreciate people bringing that up. So thank you. Rick, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Rick Welsh and I'm a environmental chemist and toxicologist with Eagle. And I, trying to think of the best ways to explain this. And I, I think it's easiest to start with that our, our group um, develops these screening levels that we're talking about. And the screening levels are calculated, are intended to be very safe, very health protective. And that means they include sensitive people, health compromised people, the elderly. And we, we, it, the, this level of safety factors are built right into our um, our uh, screening levels. So it's, it, you know, and when we're developing these screening levels, um, we're looking at both cancer and non-cancer health effects. The, the, for, for non-cancer health effects, uh, maybe a good way to describe it is that the level that would be, that would, the lowest level that produced any kind of adverse effect in either humans or lab animal studies. And we look at the whole database. And then there probably, we add on about uh, a thousand, ten thousand fold of safety factors in that. So the level that we would expect to produce, that is producing maybe some type of adverse effect, the very lowest level, we then add the safety factors on. So it, it is very, very, the levels that you're seeing that are acceptable are very, very, our, our screening levels are very, very much lower than that. And in particular for cancer effects, we use a one in a million uh, lifetime cancer risk, extra cancer risk as our, as our screening level for developing those, for those can carcinogens. And, you know, we, everybody here has about a fifty percent chance of getting cancer in their lifetime. And so again, our goal is to incorporate this one in a million cancer risk into these, these safety factors, these screening levels. So I guess that's the best way to, to initially describe how we, how we handle um, sensitive people, compromised people, that sort of thing.
Yeah, thanks for talking through that. I know there's a lot of levels of conservatism that's, that are built into the screening levels. And that's purposeful because it, you know, it is important for us to bring to you a proposed permit that we know meets those health-based rules and regulations, the things that are designed to be protective. Um, I know it is after seven. I just want to acknowledge that there are some other questions. And here, I'm gonna do one more question. Um, but there's other questions, some things that we talked about in the beginning. Folks, you know, asking questions about would this be, is this considered part of the My Healthy Climate Plan? Um, what other sort of considerations are we looking at as far as um, lowering emissions and using different types of fuels, things like that? So I mentioned this in the beginning. I know everybody might not have heard it. We don't quite have the staff on our, this panel to address those kinds of bigger My Healthy Climate Plan type of um, concerns. It's not what our air quality division does. But we do, we have engaged with our Office of Climate and Energy. They're listening in. They will get all of the questions that people ask. They'll, they'll get all the comments. So we're gonna really rely on them to help us with feedback when it comes to that. Um, so this question was about air monitoring, but not in the sense of ambient air monitoring. It's more of like um, the, the way this plant will operate will be variable. We already talked about that. It will have startup and shut down. It might operate, you know, all day one day and, and not the next day. It's really gonna have a lot of things that it's gonna depend on. The, the person said, you know, modeling is great. But what are we doing to kind of continuously look at what these emissions are? Is there any space for like continuous emissions monitoring in this proposed permit? Is it included in there? Um, is there anything that's going to be, you know, publicly available from that sort of perspective? Um, I know that for a fact, there's not like a monitor plan to be built at this facility if it gets approved that will have data that's shown to the public on a continuous basis. But I don't know, Tom, if there was any thought of continuous emissions monitoring for any of the pollutants. And by continuous emissions monitoring, what I'm talking about is something that is part of the equipment that's um, in a stack, that's kind of telling us, telling the company what the pollutant levels are of specific pollutants um, on a quote continuous basis. It's not second by second, but it's, you know, pretty close to that. So I don't know if you can just address that question? And if not, a lit, maybe a little bit more on what monitoring is required. I know you kind of talked about it at a high level, but maybe just talk about that a little bit again. And, and then once we get past this question and, and Tom gives us a little bit of feedback, we will move on to that hearing portion of the night. Just to let people know.
Yeah, I, I can touch on that for, for a minute here. Um, so the facility is required to install what is known as continuous parameter monitoring systems or CPMS. And what these monitoring systems do in relation to the control devices, it continuously monitors and records the necessary parameters for the control devices. So for example, for the uh, oxidation catalyst, the SCR, it has to be within a certain temperature range. So the facility is required to continuously monitor the temperature for those control devices. And if the temperature um, falls outside of that range, the malfunction abatement plan that I briefly touched on earlier um, will require them to address it. They will shut down if need be. Um, but they'll be required to address that. Um, they, as I mentioned, they also have to keep continuous records of that data. So that will um, be provided to the uh, district when they uh, do inspection reports or compliance reports and things like that. Um, there are not continuous emission monitoring systems. Um, but they are required to keep track of the amount of natural gas used. And they're required to um, keep track of their emission calculations as well um, based on how often they operate the engine and how much fuel they're using and based on their control technologies as well.
Yeah, thanks for talking through that, Tom. And, and those are all things that Michelle, as part of her inspection duties, if this facility is built, would have to double check all of that. Um, the facility, because it is a bigger source of air pollutants, is required to submit a lot more frequent record keeping that we then review. They have to certify to everything that they're doing. And um, so it's a little bit different than a smaller facility. There's just a lot more oversight to a facility that's being proposed to be this big. Um, so thank you again to everybody who asked questions. Really appreciate that. Um, tried to get to as many, you know, overarching questions as you had. If there's anything in here that we didn't get to, like I mentioned earlier, we will try to get the right people on responding to you. We have your name. So as long as you gave us an email address or a phone number that we can reach you at, we will definitely be doing that within the next couple of weeks here at the most. Um, so without further ado, I know it, like Chris mentioned, it is a beautiful night out. So my panelists, if you wanna turn your cameras off, thank you again for your responses to the questions tonight. Chris, if you don't mind turning your camera on so we can move into the hearing portion here. Um, all right, let me get settled. It's just a little bit of a transition here. So as a reminder, in this part of the evening, this is a formal hearing. So we'll open it with a formal statement. And I apologize, I had a time. It is a little bit boring and I will read it to you. Um, just to kind of lay the groundwork for the hearing. Um, during this time, we won't be responding to any questions that you might pose during your comment. So that's another thing that I wanna just make sure I mention again. There was several people who said in their registration that they would like to make a comment. So I will be starting with those folks. Hopefully they'll be um, able to raise their hand. And we'll talk about this after we read the opening statement. I'm gonna have Caitlin help me make sure people um, are unmuted and things like that so that they can pose their comment for us. So Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and read the opening. Chris, I'm going to go ahead and read the opening statement and start the hearing. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I am the, with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy or Eagle, and I will be the hearing officer tonight. Chris Etheridge, Air Quality Assistant Division Director, is the decision maker for this permit application. He'll be listening to your comments this evening. He will be considering all comments before making a decision. This hearing is related to a request from the Lansing Board of Water and Light to add six natural gas-fired internal combustion engines and other supporting equipment at their facility located at three, seven, two, five South Canal Road in Lansing. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is part fifty-five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can install and operate any new equipment, it must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow anyone interested in the proposed permit to provide information we can use in deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note, the proposed permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be granted at all. The department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we can use in making a decision. So for example, local zoning, truck traffic and noise concerns are not within our authority. Some of you may also want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on this proposed project. The public comment period for the proposed permit began on March twenty-seventh and will end at midnight on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Additional comments or information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this public hearing by email or by voicemail. After the public comment period closes, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three of these scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permit. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and listen to your comments. You may submit a written comment at any time during the comment period by U S post or email, or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail. I will begin calling the names of the people who have indicated they would like to make a verbal comment tonight. Once we go through those names, anyone who would like to make a comment will be able to do so, even if you haven't already indicated you would like to make a comment. For anyone that would like to raise your hand and we'll be able to unmute your line so you can speak, or you may type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment in writing tonight. We will limit your time to about three minutes. So if you're speaking, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds or so left. So thank you so much for your attention. I'll now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Uh, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the first three names on the list. And if you wouldn't mind, if you're here and you would still like to make a comment, you do not have to make a comment, even if you said you would like to make a comment. I just want to be clear about that. Um, I'll call the first three ma- names. If you can use that raise hand icon to raise your hand, that will kind of lift you to the top of the participant list. We do have fifty-two participants on right now, so that'll just kind of help us sort through them. Um, and then Caitlin, if you don't mind helping unmute folks as I call their names, that would be really helpful too. Um, and one other request for folks making a comment, if you don't mind stating your name for the record and then also any affiliation that you might have that you want to make sure is affiliated with you. So the first three names that I have are Heather Douglas, Randy Dykhouse, and John Kermit. I might have not pronounced your name properly, so I apologize in advance for that. So Heather, it looks like you are going to be, uh, first raising your hand. Caitlin's unmuted you, so go ahead and speak whenever you are ready.
So first, thank you so much for, uh, hosting this, um, uh, hearing tonight. Um, I'd like to speak in opposition to the air permit. Uh, the, um, Board of Water and Light cannot meet the, uh, renewable energy standards for the state of Michigan. If they build this, they are at thirteen percent renewable energy. If they build their planned renewable energy, they still won't be over forty percent. If they build the rice plant, they will be well below the state standard by twenty thirty. And there are far less expensive and better technologies available. It's unfortunate. The best available technology standard only applies to control. Um, because building renewable plus, uh, battery, especially iron air batteries that have hundred hours, uh, storage capacity would be less expensive for the Board of Water and Light than this plant would be to run over its life. So it's an economic mistake. It's an environmental mistake. If you still choose to permit, um, the plant, I would request that you require there to be continuous and public air monitoring for the facility. Because it's a variable speed, uh, variable plant, because the emissions are so close in the model to the hundred percent of allowable limits. Um, and because there are vulnerable communities within two miles of the plant. Um, this plant needs to be carefully monitored. And if you're going to ensure that standards are met, continuous and public emissions monitoring should be part of the permit. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. We really appreciate that. Uh, Randy, if you would like to make a comment, it looks like Caitlin has unmuted you and you should be ready to speak whenever you are ready.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm really impressed that you got my last name as well as you did. Uh, thanks. I'm Randy Dykhouse. And again, I echo Heather, uh, in saying that we're really grateful for, that you've taken this much time and put this much effort into this public hearing. Um, I'm a resident of Lansing and I am very concerned about the proposed power plant because it's based on rice technology, which is more polluting than other types of power plants, such as combined cycle. Uh, the permit that is under discussion lists at least two pollutants, nitrogen oxide and particulate matter that bump up against the upper limit of the permit. The Lansing Board of Water and Light in its application says that it should not be required to mitigate particulate matter beyond using good combustion practices. They say concerning particulate matter, there are not adverse environmental energy or economic impacts associated with the use of a clean burning fuel, i.e. natural gas and good combustion practices. This ignores the health impacts. Exposure to particulate matter has been linked to premature death, cardiovascular issues, respiratory diseases, lung cancer, neurological effects. There's already an indication that twenty twenty-three background levels of PM two point five measured at the Philly Street Monitoring Station was substantially higher than the legal standard. The rights plant will just make it worse. When considered alongside the inadequate environmental justice screening that BWL cited in its application, the emission from the new plant would disproportionately affect residents and disadvantaged communities on Lansing's southwest side. I'm also deeply concerned about the high level of greenhouse gases that would be emitted. Although carbon capture and sequestration technology may not yet be proven, BWL, BWL shades the economic truth when it says on page thirty-eight of its application that CCS would cost more than the plant. According to the Lansing State Journal, the plant will cost a hundred and sixty million dollars, which is much higher than the CCS cost BWL cites. One wonders why they felt compelled to make this false statement. There's huge interest in making CCS economical. One suspects that it will become viable during the lifetime of this plant. Given the requirement Eagle evaluates permit application based on the technology proposed, I call on you to require that BWL use the best available control technology as it's developed over the next few years. Failing to do so likely means the rice engines will be emitting the equivalent of a hundred and seventeen thousand automobiles every year for the next thirty-five to forty years. That's emissions from four million more cars in the Lansing area. This at a time when the, uh, my healthy climate plan is calling for an end to fossil fuel plants and a move away from internal combustion automobiles. Eagle should require BWL to do everything it can to achieve those goals. I'm asking Eagle to deny the permit to install, or at the very least delay it until BWL has adequate mitigation strategies for particulate matter and greenhouse gases. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dykhouse, for your comment. Appreciate that. Uh, I'm going to call three more names. It doesn't look like John Kermit is here. Uh, so I'm going to call Elaine Fishhoff, Mike Smoligan, and Nicole Kiway Bieber, if you don't mind raising your hand if you would still like to make a comment, and then we will get right to you. Um, Marta, I did see your name raised, so I think you are related to John potentially. So if you would like to make a comment in place of him, that's totally fine to go ahead and raise your hand. It's up to you. All right. So Elaine, if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and have Caitlin unmute your line so that you can make your comment. Please just remember to state your name and any affiliation for the record.
Uh, my name is Elaine Derwa Fishoff. I live in the city of Lansing and am a customer of, uh, BWL for both electricity and water. I oppose the air permit for the same reasons that, uh, Heather and Randy have mentioned. Um, and I will be submitting written comments that take into consideration the information I heard at the beginning of this program, um, because it would affect some of them. But I also agree that there should be increased monitoring requirements so that the monitoring of actual pollutants, uh, are continuously recorded and made available to the public for free. Um, BWL has a, has a habit of asking, um, customers to pay thousands of dollars to get basic information about, uh, what's what they're doing. Uh, and I would also ask you to reconsider the issuing the permit because, uh, to take into account the environmental impacts, uh, within the three mile radius, uh, one of the most disadvantaged census tracts, one of the ten most disadvantaged census tracts is less than three miles away and is already exposed to harmful emissions to human health from the existing L BWL gas plant at the same location, as well as the GM Lansing General Assembly Plant, both of which are categorized, categorized as major emitters. Given ozone and the two point five size particulate matter are already predicted to be at ninety-nine percent of the allowable limits. According to modeling, only actual results recorded for monitoring will demonstrate that those limits aren't being exceeded in reality. Um, I also oppose the, uh, air permit because it will allow BWL to build another, a third, uh, gas plant. Uh, and, uh, as other tenants have already indicated, uh, putting in, uh, renewables, uh, with battery storage um, would be a cheaper and emission-free essentially, uh, way of, uh, obtaining the same electricity. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. I appreciate that. Uh, so I'm just going to call a couple other names just to make sure we're getting our list going. Um, Nicole, I see you on there. And then, um, the next ones were Mike Smoligan and then Dusty Horwitz as well. If you are on and you would like to make a comment, go ahead, um, and raise your hand. The other thing is I wanted to mention, we do have one person who is calling in. If you would like to make a comment and you're calling in, just a reminder that you want to go ahead and push pound two on your phone and that will raise your hand. So Nicole, if you don't mind just stating your name for the record and then any affiliation, um, I would appreciate that and go ahead with your comment when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Nicole Kiway Bieber. I am a BWL customer for water because I live in East Lansing. I spent quite a time, a lot of time in the Lansing area as well. Um, it's, it's interesting listening to this because it seems like there's, um, uh, a lot of things that aren't addressed in the way that the standards are written and it, and I think it is kind of a, a strange spot that we're in right now because part of the air quality standards as they exist, I think it'd be difficult not to say they, um, came, you know, sort of inherited in a way. And part of that inheritance certainly has a tendency to view certain communities as expendable. So if we're not really being very careful that that isn't a continued way of measuring what's acceptable, then it's just more bad behavior that's saying like, well, it's, it's this amount of, uh, poison and particulate is fine, um, and it sort of is linked to who that's next to. So that's a thought as well. I happened to listen just this morning, um, the, for the U S government, the Senate Budgetary Committee had a hearing about climate change, specifically how the fossil fuel, big oil companies, um, that sort of like pattern of misrepresentation and sort of like, uh, burying the science and just doing these big propagandums. And a large part of that is the sort of latching onto natural gas, um, as somehow a cleaner option, whereas in reality, it's, uh, really damaging in terms of the methane connected to it. And, um, are we taking that into consideration, that natural gas itself is, uh, is a more even short-term damaging greenhouse gas emission? So, you know, when I said we're at an odd spot, yes, it's going to be a really hard thing to move on from fossil fuels because we've, we're all in it together where we're roped into it. You know, we're kind of shackled to the system that's doing so much damage that I, it's mind blowing that there's a certain amount of poison that's considered okay for our land and water. It's really something that we need to move on from and we can't do that if the kind of secretive ways it's decided to say like, we're going to go with more fossil fuels. Because why? Well, as another caller said, we don't really know why. How many alternatives are considered? These alternatives need to be the way we're going. It can't just be the behest of the fossil fuel companies. Even sort of deciding what are the parameters of really amazing respectable professionals like you all deciding, here's what matters is the measurement. I really urge you to deny this permit. They can do better because they have to do better. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for that comment, Nicole. Uh, so we're going to go to Marta and John Kermit. I think you might be having some problem raising your hand. I know you've said that you would still like to make a comment. So I'm going to have Caitlin, go ahead and unmute your line. It looks like you should be able to talk if you want to. You might have to unmute your, there you go. Looks like you can talk now. So I think we've got you. If you would like to make a comment, just go ahead and say your name, um, our names for the record and then go ahead with your comment whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, uh, I missed the hand raising there in time. Um, name's Jonathan Kermit. Um, I'm here with my wife Marta. We live in Millet, uh, uh, which is a small community just west of, uh, the plant. Um, we've lived there for thirty years. Um, um, I've looked over, uh, the permit in some detail and there's one, one in, in, uh, uh, in the application, um, in Eagles' own criteria, they said that they, uh, operate under the belief that no group or, uh, individual should be disproportionately burdened by a particular decision, uh, such as permitting this plant. Um, and I know you've, uh, made some attempt to address that there's a, uh, different screening, uh, health screening, uh, regulations or, or, uh, procedures that you follow, but, um, there, there's no way that this plant could not there, there's no way that this plant could not adversely affect those who are immediately uh, within a mile or slightly over a mile from the plant. Um, and, you know, well, health with existing health conditions such as asthma, it's only gonna get worse. Um, uh, I've had a bout with, uh, anemia, that's gonna get worse. Uh, and you know, the people who are, uh, it's not just our community. It's like, I think they made a real strong point that, uh, there are, uh, individuals in, in communities that are, uh, have health disparities, uh, more children in poverty, more children with, uh, asthma, more children suffering from other, um, illnesses. Um, and I think there was some comment made that would take three years before, um, uh, any health, uh, condition as a, that's a result of the factory could be looked at. It, uh, to me, that's, uh, that alone is a good reason not to, uh, uh, permit this, uh, this factory. And I think that the other concern that I have in listening to the, uh, comments was that uh, it's beyond me why the existing turbine plant and however a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand pounds it's already producing is not considered, two hundred tons, I mean, um, two hundred thousand, I don't know what it, what it generates, but it's on the same exact site. Um, there's no reason why they should be treated with different permits. The, the amount of pollution and hazardous air, uh, that, that, that comes out of the rice plant um, is in addition to what's already being generated from the turbine plants. Um, and I think the issue of monitoring has got to be much more stringent and it's got to be much closer to the plant. Um, and it has, uh, and the overview of the factory has to take place, or the monitoring of the factory has to take place more than once every couple of years, um, which is, uh, what was stated. Um, the Board of Water Light does not have a good track record when it comes to protecting uh, the health of their citizens, uh, or by, uh, having a transparent, a transparent, um, uh,
Planning procedure.
Plan that has allowed us to speak about this plan before this. This is like a dollar rate, uh, or was it a dollar short and a dollar late? Um, you know, we're just not being allowed to address directly what Board of Water Light is trying to push through with no public comment. Um, so I'll, I'll leave then. Thank you.
And do I still have a few moments?
Yeah, Marta, if you wanna make your own comment, just, um, if you don't mind saying your name and for the record.
My name is Marta Kermit, and I am also very close to the plant and I'm a social worker. And I worked at Head Start, which you know is a program for children living in poverty for thirty years. And I was really hoping I would hear that the monitoring piece would be much more stringent than this is. Uh, when it was said that there might be something, a monitor placed, I'm sorry about our dog, uh, in the southern part of the city, I was encouraged. And then when I heard that it would be looked at every three years or so, three years is the entire life of a Head Start child. And I looked at the, um, EPA's Environmental Justice Map and found that the, that very close to the plant is that whole area along Jolly Road in the south where also the asthma rates are ninety percent. And this has got to be partly due to the coal burning plant that was there for so many years. Um, I also was disappointed when, um, Mr. Hercules said that if he answered a question about what would happen if people, if the plant exceeded the emission standard. And he was pretty unclear about what you might do if they, quote, blew past the emission standards. I didn't hear a procedure for that. Um, I really was hoping to hear that monitoring would be part of this plant. I'm not sure it's the best choice, but if it's built, at the very least, we need the monitoring. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both for your comments. We appreciate the time and, and thanks for tolerating the technical challenges there as well. Uh, the next person that I'm gonna call is Dusty Horwitz. Dusty, you should be unmuted and able to go ahead and state your comment when you're ready.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yep, you sound great.
Okay, thanks. Thanks so much for hosting. Um, I live in Lansing. Um, I would like Eagle to know uh, that this application is the result of a process by the Lansing Board of Water and Light that has been highly unusual in its exclusivity toward the public and its secrecy. I'm a former member of the Board of Water and Light's Board of Commissioners, the utilities governing board composed of volunteers from the community. In at least one respect, the BWL has a significant environmental and health accomplishment because it was the second utility in the nation to remove all of its lead service lines for providing drinking water. On tonight's issue, however, the Board of Water and Light is operating in a way that raises serious questions and concerns about healthy environment and government transparency. I've worked on environmental issues for nonprofit organizations for twenty years. I've served in government and observed government for decades. When government agencies make major decisions, they typically publish detailed draft plans and invite the public to comment. Then they consider those comments and often post responses before a final decision is made. A good example is this process hosted by Eagle. The agency has made available, available to the public a proposed air permit along with multiple supporting documents and has invited the public to comment before making a decision, as we have heard tonight. The Board of Water and Light has operated much differently regarding the gas plant at issue. Last July, at one of our board meetings, the utilities management announced that it wanted to build this plant as part of a seven-hundred-fifty-million-dollar electricity expansion, the largest expansion in the utilities' history. Management shared with the public only a ten-minute verbal presentation and a one-page news release about its seven-hundred-fifty-million-dollar plan. There was no detailed draft plan. Management also said that the utility would start implementing the plan the very next day after our meeting. When I asked if there would be public comment on the plan, I was told that the public could comment at any time. What that meant is that the plan was developed and finalized before the public had a meaningful opportunity to comment. Even today, we've seen little more information than what's contained in the BWL's one-page news release. The Board of Water and Light says indeed since gas plant to supply the electric car battery plant in Delta Township. The battery plant and the jobs it will provide are very exciting. However, it's impossible to know whether the gas plant is necessary because the BWL has provided so little information about its decision-making, including what alternatives were considered. I urge Eagle to deny this permit partly because of the exclusive and secretive process that the Board of Water and Light used to select this gas plant. This highly unusual process raises serious questions about whether the Board of Water and Light would protect the public by operating within the terms of the permit. The proposed gas plant would emit serious pollutants, including particulate matter and greenhouse gases at a time when utilities should be reducing greenhouse gas emissions to avert climate change and comply with state law. Thank you so much for allowing my comments, and I'll be following up with written comments as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Horwitz, for your comment. Much appreciated. Uh, we do have one call in that has their hand up. I'm gonna get to you in just one second. I just wanna call a couple other names to get folks in the queue and get ready to make their comments if they would like to. Um, so the first person is Marshall Clayball. I don't know if I did that one right, but let me know. And then Andrew, Andrew Sarpolis. So if both of you would like to still make a comment tonight, please just raise your hand and we'll get to you in just a moment. Um, so the person that has their hand raised, I'm just gonna read the last four digits of your phone number. Um, but please make sure you identify yourself in any association when you start your comment. So the last four digits are oh-three-nine-five. You should be able to go ahead and speak your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you sound great. Thank you so much for checking.
My name is Lisa Lee. Uh, thank you for taking my comment. I really appreciate this hearing. I have to admit though, if it wasn't for John and Marta reaching out to the Lansing State Journal, I never would have known about this and I, that's very disconcerting to me. But the reason I'm calling is because last week I was on a business trip in California and I noticed that a strawberry, a plate of strawberries was ten dollars for one pound for a plate of strawberries. I could not wait to get back home to my garden and see how it was doing this spring. Because I am a gardener. I have a garden almost the size of an acre and I'm less than three miles from the plant. And now I'm very concerned about this particulate matter growing into my healthy garden and me sharing it with my neighbors and my friends or maybe even the farmer's market. How would we ever know? If there was a, a large, uh, sorry, I'm getting way too far ahead of myself. If there was a critical exposure of particulate matter in the air that would be harmful so that this healthy crop of food I'm trying to grow and share with everyone is not healthy anymore, how would we know? That's my first question. And my next question is, as a homeowner, you know, we have carbon monoxide detectors, we have radon detectors, how can I test my crops? How can I test my air? How do I know it's safe for me to be outside on any particular day? Are you even able to answer these questions today or is this something that we'll never know?
So I'm sorry, just to remind you, any questions that you asked during the comment period, we can't respond to right now, but we will respond to them when we respond to the comments.
Uh, is that something that you'll respond today or because I, I didn't register? I didn't know about this, but I couldn't pre-register?
Nope, I'm, no, that's okay. Sorry. I know some, the process can be confusing sometimes and I will go over once the comment period, this, the hearing is over, once I close the hearing out, I'll go over kind of next steps and when you'll be hearing from us. Does that sound good?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And again, I really appreciate this hearing. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Uh, so the next person is Marshall Clayball. Clayball? Maybe I did that right. Marshall, you should be ready to speak whenever you're ready.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, my name is Marshall Clayball. I'm a Lansing, Michigan resident. I would like to first, uh, refer back to an article in the Lansing City Paul's dated December twenty-one, twenty-seventeen. James Cliff, Policy Director at Michigan Environmental Council, felt a sense of deja vu. "It wouldn't be the first time we've seen the utility rush into a decision that wasn't well thought out," he said. James Cliff, now being Deputy Director of this agency Eagle, perhaps we, uh, you know, get his opinion on the matter once again. Uh, not only am I feeling a sense of deja vu, but I'm feeling a sense of insanity. And it's been ten years, uh, that I've been very closely monitoring, uh, the BWL's plans towards renewable energy, meeting renewable energy standards, installing, uh, award-winning community solar, uh, operation in East Lansing, uh, all part of a twenty-fifteen commitment to action for a hundred percent renewable energy. So I've been, I've been deep in the weeds, uh, developing battery technology myself. Uh, back in this article, it says, Pethly said the BWL worked with, uh, nine-member Citizens Advisor Committee for six months in twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen, almost ten years ago. Uh, that advisory committee advised BWL to monitor emerging technologies and reevaluate its energy portfolio every four years. But it would be hard to reverse Monday's big decision once the first shovel is turned. That's where we're at again, uh, seven years later. Um, at this time, uh, it's quoted in this article right here. However, Pethly said, "Is ninety-nine percent likely that the proposed plant will be the last baseload plant BWL will ever build?" So here we are finding ourselves, uh, deja vu scenario in the one percent. Now, how do we get here? Well, uh, it was announced, uh, that the state of Michigan, uh, was attracting a new battery plant. Uh, I'm a battery advocate. I've broken down tens of thousands of lithium ion cells, looking to upcycle landfill destined battery packs into new working battery packs for solar storage. At a time when nearly every international agency, academics, activists, businesses are all calling on the world leaders to stand up and phase out fossil fuels. Uh, we cannot have a fossil fuel future if we are to have a habitable climate for future generations. Uh, it's really, uh, numbing and, and the insanity part that I'm feeling that BWL would, would stand here today applying for an air permit and, and that Eagle, uh, you know, I, a lot of respect for the work that this agency does and is doing and, and the goals that are set. Would, would, would consider, you know, granting such a permit. Uh, just looking at Eagle's mission here, to protect Michigan's environment and public health by managing air, water, land, and energy resources. I just, I, I, I struggle to see how that can be met. And last point here in my last ten seconds, uh, Eagle, this, this is frustrating for me, almost emotional. Um, but Eagle leads. Eagle takes a strategic approach that accounts for the impacts of today's actions on future generations. That's all we need to know right there. We need to think about future generations. How are we gonna leave them, uh, stranded asset to not only cost, uh, you know, pay for economically, uh, but more importantly environmentally? We need to protect our land, air, and water, uh, and this agency has a big decision on its plate. Thank you.
Marshall, thank you so much for your comment. Greatly appreciated. Uh, the next person that I have on the list is Andrew Sarpolis. Andrew, you have your hand up. Also wanna just put out there that if anyone else who has not already made a comment and would like to make a comment tonight, you guys can go ahead and raise your hands now. Um, just as a reminder, that's pound two on your phone, if you would like, if you're on your phone. Um, and then anyone else, just use that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. So Andrew, you should be unmuted and anytime you're ready to go ahead with your comment, just please remember to introduce yourself in any association that you might have.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, you sound great as well.
All right, perfect. Yeah, thanks. Grateful to be here. Um, thank you to Eagle for taking my comments. My name is Andrew Sarpolis. Um, I'm a field manager for the Sierra Club here in Michigan. We will be submitting our own detailed written comments, but I wanted to take an opportunity to offer my own verbal comments here. And I'm going to recommend that Eagle reject this air permit, and I do so on the grounds of public health and climate change. I just wanna point out first, due to the framing of the presentation beforehand, that health research has shown that some of the current standards for pollutants can still cause serious adverse health effects and can cause harm to human health. Legal compliance is not a scientific health standard. And I would also like to point out that mistakes have been made before in terms of the legal interpretations of air rules multiple times in the last decade in this state. Um, also Eagle is the publisher of the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan, and that plan calls for net zero carbon emissions by the middle of the century. So Eagle bears a level of future accountability for stopping the catastrophic five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tons of greenhouse gas emissions proposed to come from this facility. And it is unfortunate that this cannot be considered. But this is an air permit, so I will talk for a minute about those impacts as well. Um, there are vulnerable populations living near this location, as indicated in Eagle's own Michigan EJ Screen Tool and in the federal CEJST Census Tract Data Tool. The directly adjacent census tracts in this CEJST tool, for example, are in above the ninetieth percentile for asthma. The risk of the exabsorption of asthma and other respiratory diseases in these areas would violate Eagle's own commitments to environmental justice. The Healthy Climate Plan calls for health benefits to EJ communities in the energy transition. But such a permit here today could hardly be said to represent that vision. Instead, it puts communities that are finally breathing free after coal retirements at risk again of breathing more nitrogen oxides, more volatile organic compounds, and more particulate matter. The Lansing State Journal published an article in March of twenty fifteen that reported on allegations of more than three-thousand-five-hundred self-reported pollution violations of the Clean Air Act at LBWL facilities. The Sierra Club eventually settled with LBWL, leading to the retirement of its coal-fired Erickson Generating Station by no later than December twenty-twenty-five and committing to specific clean energy investments in its settlement. And that is to say nothing of the groups who have spoken with the media about alleged water issues at Erickson after its closure. What we have seen is a troubling string of stories from the press and from local environmental organizations over the last decade. And as we deal with the ongoing legacies of our past bad energy decisions, one must ask how we can perhaps with more foresight heed the warnings of concerned citizens this time and prevent more pollution from impacting our communities. So I ask Eagle to please reject this permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. The next person that I have on the list is Ronald Peterson. Mr. Peterson, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak your comment whenever you're ready.
Ronald Peterson. And I am a Lansing resident of forty-five years, been a BWL customer of the same. Um, I am asking Eagle to reject the permit uh, for the new rice plant that BWL proposes. Um, I know that Eagle has some limits as to what they can consider. Uh, perhaps it's mostly due to the stack emissions, uh, questions, but I agree with what Nicole said earlier that, that's, uh, really deficient. That the amount of pollution from natural gas, while it may be less than coal at the stack, uh, it's extremely polluting. It's another fossil fuel plant. It'll be the third one as I count if it opens in twenty-twenty-six as they apparently hope. It'll be their third fossil fuel plant BWL has put online in thirteen years. The amount of pollution that, uh, this rice plant- The amount of pollution that uh this rice plant will produce is excessive. It's not the best technology, number one, but the additional uh concern that. Uh, some of the time when the plant will be operating. It won't even be running with a fully functioning SCR emissions control system. Because it requires significantly longer for it to start up and. I must say I was a little disappointed in the response from Eagle about this issue. If they are running this for peak power. Uh, coverage, they may be starting it and stopping it, um, not infrequently. And for the SCR system to be not fully functioning during this time period, I don't know how the modeling worked. It wasn't spoken to, and I'm very, very concerned about, um, especially the people that live in the hotel. As Randy was saying, and others, the lack of proper monitoring, uh, exterior monitoring. And uh, in listening to. Uh, others speak to the amount of violations the Lansing Board of Water and Light has had over the years. They are going in the wrong direction, and I really hope that Eagle finds their application deficient. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Peterson. Uh, the next person that I have uh with their hand raised is Reverend Tom Jones. Reverend Jones, if you don't mind, you can go ahead and just please introduce yourself and any association and then go ahead and start your comment.
Yes, my name is Tom Jones. I live um downwind of Erickson's plant. On the corner of Hart and Williams. Um, we have an organic farm here and are definitely concerned about. Um, initially, it was the coal ash problem in the groundwater and now learning about the air pollution problem. I'm not at all pleased to hear, you know, what's happening in my neighborhood directly upwind of me. Um, also, we do have solar power on this farm. I use it for an electric fence for my sheep. I use it to power a fan in the greenhouse. And I hear a lot of nonsense from electric companies saying, oh, we'd like to go solar, but either it doesn't work good enough or blah, blah, blah. And what I found when putting ours up was there is a limit on how big of a solar installation we are allowed to put up. Based on the previous year's um electricity usage. And so I would like to hear some advocacy on the part of all the power companies to lift this kind of a ban. And also, when we, we're tied into the grid, so when we sell the power back to the power company. We get paid a lot less than they charge us for delivering it. And I understand. You know, there's a lot of details in that, there should be some, but if they made a slight change in that, maybe we would have more people willing to. Produce solar energy that would help them mitigate the need for a plant in this area. Um, especially if it's a plant that's putting out so much electricity, we can sell it to Ohio. That's just disgusting. So I would like uh a monitor um that can stop this pollution. The monitor, make sure it doesn't go over the legal limits, um, directly upwind of me, and I thank you for listening to my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Jones, for your comments. Greatly appreciate that. Uh, that's the last person that I have with their hand raised. We still have time for other comments, so if there's anybody who has not made a comment and who would still like to tonight. Uh, we definitely have time for that. Um, just to reiterate, while folks are thinking about whether they want to make a comment tonight. There are other ways to comment and there is um time after the hearing ends until March fourteenth that comments will be still accepted. So just wanted to remind everybody of that. And Mike Smalligan, I see that you have your hand up, so if you would like to make your comment. Caitlin's gonna unmute you and then just make sure that you state your name for the record, please.
Great, thank you, Eagle. My name is Mike Smulligan. I'm a Lansing resident and Board of Water of Light customer. I am not speaking on behalf of my employer or any affiliated organizations, but simply as a, a resident. Of Lansing and a Board of Water of Light customer. I'm reviewing the uh, the fact sheet that Eagle provided about this permit, and thank you for that information. And uh, I, I recognize that Eagle has to issue permits according to the law. And I see on page nine, uh, this project appears to comply with state and federal law. I would just, um. I would just ask, is state and federal law adequate to protect the health of the Lansing residents? I appreciate Eagle's uh excellent work in putting together your online environmental justice mapper. And I'm taking a look at your Eagle's online environmental justice mapper for the city of Lansing. And I noticed that uh my neighborhood in downtown Lansing, where uh the Grand River passes underneath four ninety six. Is a bright red and one of the lower quality uh neighborhoods in Lansing in terms of environmental conditions. Looks like uh my neighborhood's in the sixty ninth percentile. And uh, I'm concerned as a Lansing resident about air quality and water quality pollution. And I, again, I recognize that Eagle has to implement the law as it's written. I am just concerned that our environmental laws in Michigan are not adequate to uh protect. Air quality and water quality and public health. So thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I appreciate uh, uh, this public hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comment. Uh, so like I mentioned, Mr. Smalligan was the last person with their hand raised. I want to just give everybody. Another minute if you haven't made a comment and you would like to tonight, and I apologize, I misspoke. The public comment period is open until May fourteenth, not March fourteenth. Apologies for that. Two M months, I guess. It confused me there for a second. So I'll give you guys just a little bit longer to make sure nobody else wants to make a comment, and then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing if nobody does. And kind of go over what some of the next steps might be as far as uh the permit decision and and what comes after that. Okay, Chris, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Are you okay if I go ahead and close the public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public meeting, public hearing. Will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again. Uh, so now we can talk a little bit more, a little bit less formally, I guess, on next steps and things like that. A couple of things I want to just. Let folks know about, as I had mentioned, there's a variety of different ways you can make a comment. So if after tonight you have some things to think about, maybe you did comment tonight and you want to comment more, um, some folks mentioned. Turning in written comments. That's perfectly okay. We have a lot of different ways that we will accept comments until May fourteenth. So you can send us a letter in the mail. You can send us an email at eagle dash AQD dash PTI public comments at Michigan dot gov, and I know we have someone calling in. Um, so I will try to give you Tom's email address very slowly in case you want to write it down. But you can also call our public comment voicemail, and that phone number is five one seven two eight four zero nine zero zero. Um, all of these comments weigh the same, so whether you made a comment tonight or you wait, you send a comment in in one of these way, in one of these ways. We look at those all the same. Um, they're all going to be assessed by uh this crew and the decision maker when we make a final permit decision. Uh, you can also find other information. Um, some of the other commentators talked about the proposed project summary. Uh, that's a very high level overview of what this project was all about. Um, there's other information on there that's not specifically related to. The permit application and review, but is other air quality information that you might find interesting. The technical fact sheet digs deeper into the review of the permit, the rules and regulations that apply, the uh proposed. Um, releases of air pollutants, things like that. So that's a, a, a little bit of deeper dive. You can also find the proposed permit terms and conditions on that page, and we will post a recording to this meeting. So we will, we would try to do that as soon as we possibly can. I would say it's very likely to be up there on Friday, but it might not be until Monday. Just to let people know, but we'll also send you a link if you gave us your email address. Um, but all of that you can find at Michigan dot gov. Slash Eagle, E G L E, air public notice and Eagle, Eagle air public notice is all one word, so just kind of keep that in mind. If you're looking for that, uh, so on the screen right now, for those who are still with us, there is all the contact information from your panelists tonight. Because we have somebody on the phone, I am going to go ahead and just read Tom's contact information out loud. Uh, but if you wanted to jot this down, again, this will be information that we share on the video and if. We'll share an email that kind of follows up with this meeting as well. So that's Tom Hercules and his email address is H E R. C U L A, and then the letter T, so Hercules T. It's at Michigan, all spelled out, dot gov is in government. And his phone number is five one seven two seven five two nine one two. So if you want to send him an email, give him a call, so we can get your contact information, and then you can be included in all of this other. Um, information that we're going to be sending, that we can send out. So, um, somebody had asked about next steps. Great question. The comment period closes on May fourteenth, so once we close the comment period, we'll have all the comments, including the ones that we were given tonight. Including some that we've already gotten. We will consolidate all of those. We really look at them individually and kind of assess. Does this comment give us something that we can change in the permit? Once we look at that, we actually pull together a document that we call a response to comments document, and it goes through all of those comments. And kind of categorizes them and and talks about, did this comment make a, you know, a, an impact on the decision? If so, what was that impact? And we kind of lay it all out for folks. So we'll, we will also share that online. We will um post a gov delivery note, so if you were on this whole time, you heard me talk about that. Again, that's that subscription service that we have if you want to um get on for that. But anybody that was at this meeting that we have an email address, we will give you an email that says this was the decision. And then if it's appropriate, you'll have the final permit in your hand. So timing wise, like I said, ends on May fourteenth. It can take us a while to get through those comments. We try to do it quickly, but it can take a while. Sometimes it takes a couple weeks. Sometimes it takes. Longer than that, um, sometimes shorter than that. So my answer really is it depends. Um, but we'll definitely communicate that decision to everybody, so that's kind of one of the things I want to lay out there. Um, Tom and the rest of the group were, were open to other questions. You know, a lot of times people come to the hearing and they're like, okay, well, I guess that's it. Well, if you have other questions, we're happy to answer them. There's definitely questions in the Q and A that we did not get to. We're going to do our best to get back to folks who didn't get their questions answered, or get those questions to people who can answer them. Because like I mentioned, a lot of those things were kind of out of the scope of this permitting action. So hopefully that helps with next steps. One thing I just want to say is thank you very, very much for participating with us tonight. Uh, I think it was great for us to have so many people on and and very engaged in this decision, so we appreciate that. And a lot of great comments and a lot of great questions tonight. So hope you guys are able to enjoy the sun a little bit. It doesn't look like it's quite gone down for us yet. So, um, beyond that, I hope everybody has a great rest of your evening. And Caitlin, if you want to go ahead and stop the meeting, that'd be wonderful. Thanks, everybody.